So on a call to order, our regular village board meeting on Thursday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, village manager, Rowley, if you could do a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listener.
Here.
Trustee Mealopolis.
Here.
Trustee Underdunk.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
President Rowan.
Here. Here, live streaming this meeting and posting the links to the live streaming. So they can take this recording available on the YouTube channel, Rowley's News. Um, first item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes. Minutes circulated to the public through the community. Um, I'll ask for motion to the district committee's comments. I'll ask for motion to approve the pending holding of the public night session. Three in the world question, Lake River meeting also held. The absent comments have been voted approved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is public comment. I don't know what the rules are when there are these moments of public which is going to do. This portion of the meeting allows for those attendings to address the board regarding non-attend items. I will request that public comments related to agenda items be provided when those attend on agenda. All comments are limited to five. Three minutes, but I'll provide speaker with time is up. Um, and the total public comments on non-attend items. Any public comments? Okay. Next item on the agenda is reports of committees. Uh, the major reports meeting in whole, which we just had earlier this evening. Um, and we have to discuss the plan for the architectural plan for the new clubhouse. We had presented by our golf club manager, the life architect, live under the co-chairs for our AIPAC design team. We've had some questions. And at the end of the day, um, we have to pledge our express support for proceeding the plan of the five chan. And whatever we do at the whole. Next item is finance committee. Trustee Rubin is our chair.
So we met on Tuesday and we first discussed our monthly bills reports, uh, from October and as we have got COVID, the general fund revenue performance, the number of those revenue sources that exceed both the monthly budget targets and the prior year ratios that included places for even taxes, income taxes, utility taxes, uh, building permits, use tax surcharges, parking fees, and more. Uh, we discussed it within the property tax bills by the December first. Uh, and as of Tuesday, at least, we have not yet received, I'm assuming we still have not received any money from the county yet, which must be collected as a much superior pay, including myself. Uh, we expect those issues to be completed in the second fall and the property later semester. Expenditures of all of our funded budgetary targets, although the committee discussed the fact, uh, that our this weekend's agenda is the second fall of the village's main project to be approved. Uh, we also discussed progress on the chief's capital plan, which did several changes to target, uh, projection, which indicates, uh, which is almost across anyone who can follow along, since it's taken longer to get the supplies and things so that you can get it up. Uh, committee spent most of the evening, uh, and it's all you are sitting here now. Uh, I say this to those who are watching later, the committee discussed the village's proposed calendar point on to a budget, which includes significant reinvestment in the community's infrastructure, with over twenty million dollars planned in stormwater, water removal places, sidewalk, and parking lots. So we will, uh, and on the ground, uh, or on the floor, uh, form a presentation of public reports next month, uh, for, uh, for, uh, I want to add, for those who weren't there, this is what we talked about, three hundred and fifty, about those dollars, a hundred and twenty-six. You, for all to see, what we need to remember, and we would be happy, uh, what we do, uh, for this product, uh, uh, all that, um, but we can really often, uh, improve how the, uh, structure, how we change that from a more efficient, uh, on the one year, uh, the building, uh, goals are, both the ones that the building is on, uh, three, what they are in twenty-four, uh, with the, uh, really, really excellent, uh, block, uh, anything that matters.
And you are, we have to report to your chief manager, uh, concerning the village's overall.
Okay, thank you very much. So on November eighth, the plan commission met, um, discussed a number of things. The first thing we did talk about were electric vehicle charging stations in the business district and kind of what, what the guidelines were in terms of design, color, signage. Um, and we had, you know, had some clarification in terms of what, what we liked, what we didn't like, and felt very comfortable that staff, um, would be able to provide, um, guidance to, um, to anybody applying for one of those, um, elec- electric vehicle charging stations, um, because we definitely don't want the ones with flashing lights, with lots of signage, with any types of ads. And so again, trying to make it in keeping with the, the design of Glencoe. Um, but we will have staff, um, doing those determinations. We didn't feel that the, um, plan commission needed to be involved with that. We also talked about the comprehensive plan and at our November eighth meeting, we were talking about the highway frontage district. So that's our little strip of land on the west side of the expressway, which is currently, um, improved with automobile dealerships. We talked about different types of potential uses, um, that could go in that area and felt very comfortable that automobile dealerships was the right use, um, at this time. And we certainly want to do everything that we can to encourage, um, that use at that location. So we felt that it really wasn't an area that we needed to study for the comprehensive plan. Uh, we also talked about the downtown area in terms of potentially, um, increasing height, um, at different locations. And that's still a work in progress, but we were talking about, you know, the benefits of density, um, and also just keeping the character of, um, the downtown area. So we're, we're continuing to kind of look, look at that area. But we did also, um, ask Tesco and Associates to start, um, coming up with their draft for the comprehensive plan. So where I think we're in the last six months here, um, and if they get far enough along, we will be meeting on December twentieth to choose, take a look at the, the first phase of their draft. Thank you.
Thanks for that, that report. So for those of us old timers, it's actually uptown. But.
I know. I wasn't uptown. I went uptown.
There you go.
But why?
Um, race sport, okay, I've got to stop. Um, okay, the next report is the golf advisory committee. We haven't talked about golf enough, so our representative on the golf advisory committee is Trustee Hallwax.
Thank you. Well, never talk enough about golf, but obviously we had the earlier meeting tonight and an update on the operations, uh, weather continues to be, to be a driving factor in a record year. Uh, it's a hundred and twenty rounds played today, actually. So year-to-date rounds are nine thousand rounds over budget and revenue is seven hundred and eighty thousand over budget. So this is a record-breaking year. Uh, the Audubon International, uh, recertification was done in October. Uh, so the course is recertified every three years, three years, uh, in accordance with the Audubon Standards for Excellence. And then the clubhouse, uh, design review committee, obviously we, um, reviewed that tonight and they've had several meetings, four meetings in the last two months. And, um, you know, everybody from, from President Rowan's update, there's the contemporary style that's been, a contemporary prairie design has been, has been decided and recommended to the village board earlier today. That's our update.
Thanks for that report and, you know, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that's a lot of money, but that's great. Um, next report is the sustainability task force, Trustee Mealopolis. Terrific. Uh, you know, commend the sustainability task force for both the bright stars event, which I've heard about, a lot of people thought was terrific, and for this, which I'm going to take home and pay attention to. We should get that out to the rest of our residents. Um, okay, next report, the council for inclusion and community. Trustee Scott is our representative on that.
Thank you. The council for inclusion and community met on Wednesday, November first and summarized the District Thirty-five family belonging event and discussed the upcoming Light the Lights event. The council will participate in Light the Lights by hosting a photo booth. The council also discussed whether or how it can be a resource to the community during this difficult time relative to the conflict in Israel and Gaza and concurred that there may be a time in the future for facilitated conversations supported by organizations that are trained in facilitation, though now may not be the appropriate time to do so. Uh, regarding the two thousand and twenty-four activities and planning, the council continued its discussion of a new subcommittee structure to help facilitate the council's work. The next meeting is scheduled on Wednesday, December sixth at five thirty P M.
Thank you very much. Um, the next and last report is the preservation commission and Trustee Underdunk is our representative on that.
Okay. The preservation commission met on November sixth. The commission reviewed a demolition permit application for eleven seventy-one Holdfelder Road. This is a historically significant property and was built as a farmhouse in nineteen oh three. Despite its age and its, and, and it is in relatively good condition. Under the current code, the developer-owned property could be redeveloped to accommodate a newer, larger home, and, um, we cannot stop redevelopment. Future code amendments could slow down the redevelopment process and explore ways to preserve our historic homes. Without the tools to address the loss, the commission took no action on the application. The commission also discussed a proposed addition to an honorary landmark at sixty-nine Longwood and discussed the need for an update, uh, to the village list of historically significant properties to include mid-century modern properties over fifty years of age. The commission then met in joint session with the zoning board of appeals at seven P M. to discuss potential zoning code amendments that would support preservation. Zoning bonuses were proposed for historically significant and local landmark properties. In many cases, this would allow the expansion of a historic home without a demolition. A two-step process was recommended with an advisory review by the preservation commission, which would be forwarded to the zoning board for conditional approval of variance. There appeared to be general agreement with this proposal with additional review by the village attorney. The next preservation commission meeting will be December fifth.
Thank you very much. That concludes the reports of the committees. The next item on the agenda is reports of officers and the first part of that is the village manager's report. So village manager, Rowley.
Thank you, President Rowan. Good evening, everyone. Uh, just a few items, um, but important ones to talk about this evening. The first is, uh, a welcome to a, a new and very important staff member. Um, I'm very pleased tonight to formally welcome our new public works director, Monica Sarna. She's sitting right over there. Um, you've all met her already because in her first few weeks, she's already been thrust into having to defend a budget, uh, in front of all of you and has done a tremendous amount of work in a very short period of time. Uh, she did start with us on October twenty-third. Um, not surprisingly, I have just been continually impressed with her skills and abilities since, since she started with us. Um, just as a recap of the process, so Monica was selected following an extensive nationwide recruitment effort. Uh, the selection process included interviews by community partners, elected officials, uh, our team and public works and members of our senior leadership team. Uh, as a licensed professional engineer, Monica came to the village from the town of Wake Forest, North Carolina, where she served as assistant engineering director. In addition to her public sector experience, Monica's worked with several engineering firms managing millions of dollars of utility investment projects and significant teams across multiple states. Uh, Monica and her husband grew up in northern Illinois, and so, uh, this has been a bit of a homecoming for them, and, uh, we couldn't be more pleased, uh, that they are here. Um, so when I say Monica has jumped right into her responsibilities, I'm not sure that that adequately underscores, uh, how much she's already done and how much she's already accomplished. Um, she immediately jumped into what was almost a finalized draft budget, um, that you all reviewed on Tuesday evening, uh, but in order to get it into the form that, uh, you were able to, uh, see it, she spent hours working through, in particular, the C I P., our community, our community investment program, um, looking at our water, uh, infrastructure and, uh, working through options and plans to make sure that we are adequately, uh, resourcing that effort, uh, over the next ten years. Um, she's already showcasing in her new role, the attributes that she highlighted in the recruitment process, um, her ability to quickly learn and understand the village's systems and processes, her commitment to excellence, and her team player attitude. All of these have been firmly on display since she first entered the doors, and, uh, I really couldn't be more pleased that she's here. Uh, really, we, we are all really looking forward to what she's going to contribute and importantly, um, helping her to become more acquainted with Glencoe and with our community at large. Um, we are going to plan, um, a community meet and greet event in early December, and we're finalizing that date still, but, um, we're looking forward to it. So again, I just for now want to welcome Monica, thank her for joining our team. Um, we know you're going to do great things and thanks for being here.
I want to interrupt this. I had an opportunity, uh, to interview folks who apply for the job. And Monica was just fabulous. And I've interviewed a lot of people over my seventy years. Uh, she was great. So, and all the reports from the village manager since she's appeared have been glowing, but in light of what we saw in the very first minute, nobody's surprised. But we are so grateful that you're here and we all have worked for as long as we could hold on.
A very long time, forever. Thank you. Thank you. And, and Monica will be presenting more tonight. There's just not a whole lot for her to present. We were thinking about throwing stuff in her lap just for fun, but we'll wait till next month. Um, I do have a couple of, of other just quick reports to make. Um, the first relates to leaf collection. Uh, so the village's annual fall leaf collection program is underway in full force. Crews are currently working through the community and as of today, we've already collected seven thousand cubic yards of leaves. That's more than double what we collected at this time last year. So, um, leaves fell earlier to this year for sure, but, uh, those crews are out there. We have three, um, new within the last year and a half leaf backs of our five, and I think that has also helped, um, because we're not seeing the breakdowns that we were on some of the others. Uh, so things are moving along quite quickly. Um, crews are going to be working until the early part of December. We don't have a final date at this moment, um, but they will be, uh, making the rounds until we get those leaves fully collected. Our website's being updated on a daily basis to provide information on where we are and, uh, what neighborhoods we will be in next. And again, just a, just a, uh, a side note to thank, uh, our partners at the, uh, Chicago Botanic Garden, um, all of our leaves, and we typically collect between ten and eleven thousand cubic yards. All of those leaves go back to the Botanic Garden where they're processed into mulch and, uh, compost and are used on the garden's three hundred and fifty acres in a variety of different ways. Uh, it's a wonderful recycling effort. It's a wonderful community partnership. We're grateful to them and grateful that, um, really, this is how it's been working since the early nineteen nineties. And, um, uh, it's a great program. There's somebody sitting behind the dais whose, this is their favorite program that the village, um, performs. It's not me, but the person might be sitting next to me. Um, but it is really a, a, a great program and again, a great partnership and, uh, Public Works is doing a great job with it this season. So, uh, again, check out the website if you need more information on where we'll be. Uh, next Friday, November twenty-fourth is our down, our, our downtown will again be a glow in beautiful lights to brighten up the winter months. Uh, I want to say a special thanks this year to our Public Works crews, particularly under the leadership of supervisor John Sojor, who have worked literally for weeks and weeks, uh, to remove our old incandescent holiday lights from our downtown trees and replace those with vibrant, energy-efficient LEDs. Um, it is, I have had the opportunity, uh, in the early morning hours to see our crews working. Uh, they've been starting around five thirty to try to get all of those trees done. All the downtown trees are fully lit at this point and will turn on, uh, next week. But I'll tell you, it's going to be a vibrant showcase. It's going to look really great. So, um, it's, it, it's just a testament to the hard work of our team. But Sammy is going to tell you about a very important event, as I said, next Friday, uh, our Light the Lights event, that she has been taking a front row seat in planning, um, and it's going to be a great community event. Sammy, will you tell us a little bit about it?
Yep. Um, week from tomorrow, Light the Lights, um, will take place on the twenty-fourth inside the seventh throughout the downtown with the main events happening in Wyman Green, including the lighting ceremony, which will commence right at five, with lights on by five-ten. Um, this year, like Phil mentioned, we have an enhanced light display in Wyman Green, including a six-foot, three-D di- display of the village's zip code. So that'll be a fun, um, photo opportunity for the community starting Monday. So that'll be up through the holiday weekend. Very excited about that. Along with that, there are plenty of family fun activities going on throughout the town, um, food and drink vendors, live music all night, and holiday shopping, of course, in our local businesses. Um, this year, we have several sponsors. Our presenting sponsor was North Shore Bank and Trust. And then we had three supporting sponsors as well, Savin Dental, Valentina, and Hometown Coffee and Juice. So we are very thankful to have community partners supporting the event this year. Yeah. Any questions?
It's going to be a lot of fun.
See you all there.
The weather's going to be great. It's going to be perfect, a perfect evening to enjoy our downtown, enjoy our downtown businesses particularly. If you don't shop on Friday night, then you should come back on Saturday because Saturday, the twenty-fifth of November, is an important day celebrated across the country. That is Small Business Saturday. Um, it's something that has, uh, been celebrated for a number of years, but is particularly important in a community like Glencoe, which is a community of small businesses, um, particularly our retailers. Uh, it's, it's a joy to be able to see, um, our retailers, uh, preparing for the holiday season and, um, crowds filling those stores. So please do remember to shop local, shop Glencoe first. Don't go online and purchase something from Amazon when you can stop downtown, uptown, uptown, downtown. Um, go to uptown at, at, um, hometown when you're downtown. Uh, but seriously, folks, it is, it, this is an important time of the year for our local businesses, and please do think of them first, particularly our restaurants. I wanted to just also mention, next week is Thanksgiving, and, um, due to the Thanksgiving holiday, all of the village's offices will be closed Thursday, the twenty-third, and Friday, the twenty-fourth. Um, as a reminder, Thursday and Friday, garbage and recycling collection is delayed one day. So if, if you are normally on Thursday, that'll be Friday. Normally on Friday, it will be Saturday. And, um, I wish for everyone in the community a very, uh, happy Thanksgiving, and I hope folks have the opportunity to enjoy the holiday. It is my wife's favorite holiday because, uh, we go to her parents' house and, um, my mother-in-law doesn't let her do anything, so she's able to put her feet up, um, and enjoy it. It is my favorite holiday is for the, for the same reason. So I hope others have, have a wonderful holiday as well. That is my report for the evening.
Thanks for that report. The next item on the agenda is the village president's report. And the first item there is consideration proclamation declaring November twenty-two three as Native American marriage month. That's been circulited, circulated to the board. It's been published to the community. Um, unless there are any questions, uh, can I have a motion to issue that proclamation?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation honoring the life legacy of Robert E. Morris, who was, uh, a long time Glencoe village manager. Uh, when I s- when I say long time, I mean nineteen fifty-one to nineteen eighty-two. So, um, he was the village during that period of time. Um, he finished his run, uh, very shortly before I had my first, um, term on the village board, so I didn't, I didn't, so work with him. Um, but he was a legend. Um, I think he invented the public safety model, which we're using, and, um, he just died last week at a hundred and one. Uh, he had a life of consequence, and Glencoe got the full benefit of that. For the time he was village manager and superintendent, uh, because he was a legendary village manager, um, on the aspect of our village management, uh, we're, uh, jealous of, uh, Bob Morris, there is a proclamation that, yeah, has been circulated before, has been, uh, published to the community now, and I'll ask.
Thanks, President, President Rowan. Yeah, it, you know, Bob was, um, a, a unique individual on so many levels, and it's hard to encapsulate the impact that he made. Um, but I, I had the benefit of, um, seeing Bob on a weekly basis at Glencoe Rotary meetings. Um, from the time I started in December of two thousand and thirteen. From the time I started in December of twenty thirteen until Glencoe Rotary disbanded earlier this year. And I will tell you, Bob was one of those individuals who people sought out, people wanted to, to talk to. And it was because he was welcoming, he cared, he wanted to help. And I think that's encapsulated in the life of service that he, that he really showcased. You know, his time here in Glencoe really started in nineteen forty-nine when he was hired as the administrative assistant to the village manager. He was then promoted to village manager. Two years later, he was the third village manager in this community. We've only had nine, I'm the ninth. And Bob was the fir-, uniquely, at this timeframe, in this timeframe, village managers, city managers were generally trained as engineers. Much of the work of professional government at the time was focused on building out infrastructure and being focused on the right way to do that. And so, a lot of city and village managers were trained formally as engineers. Bob was the first in the state of Illinois to be trained as a professional manager, as a public administrator. And he carried that throughout his life. I think one of his biggest contributions to the profession of professional city management is that he had, he can count seventy-three individuals who either worked directly with him here in Glencoe or worked directly for the individuals that worked here in Glencoe, who then went on to serve a one hundred and thirty-three cities, villages, and counties across the country as city managers, county managers. It's just staggering, his impact on the profession. The International City County Managers Association awarded him a distinguished service award about ten or so years ago. They awarded him the first-ever Career Development Award for training young individuals for urban management careers. That award is now provide, is now given out annually to individuals who, 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 again, dedicate much of their time to seeing and, and growing, seeing opportunity and growing that opportunity in young people in this profession. And he is the namesake of the Lifetime Achievement Award for the Illinois City County Managers Association, which is an award now given to a deserving retired city or village manager every year. As the president-elect for ILCMA, that carries a lot of relevance to me. And it's particularly important for me to work to carry on the legacy that Bob started. And I think the staff that we have in this organization would rival any member of the staff that Bob had in his tenure. But it's not about a competition. I think it's, it's about legacy. And I think it shows that Glencoe is a place where people grow, where people get better, and where people contribute and continue to contribute. So, it, it's an honor to, to really serve in Bob's shadow in my role. Bob was always one of those individuals who cared a great deal, but never, ever preached what you should do. He listened and provided advice and said, "But I'm not in the seat. All I know is I want to help you make the, make the decision that you think is the right one," which he did. And he did it frequently for me and for very many, many others throughout his career. So, we will miss Bob. He was a great Glenconian, in addition to a, a great individual. And his legacy will be long.
He probably talked about, he probably did, yes. I'd agree with you on that. But that was not, you know, major in light of his. So, unless there's anything else anyone wants to say, is there a motion to approve the proclamation honoring the legacy of Robert B. Morris? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item on the, on the village president's report is a series of reappointments and appointments to boards and commissions. I'll, let me read the names and the appointment. Reappointment of Andrew Berlins, Public Safety Commission, for a term expiring May twenty-twenty-six. Reappointment of Amy Mizell to the Council for Inclusion and Community, term expiring May twenty-twenty-six. Reappointment of Anise Moses to the Council for Inclusion and Community, term expiring May twenty-twenty-six. Reappointment of Helene Latham to the Sustainability Task Course, term expiring May twenty-twenty-six. New appointment of Eleanor Shai to the Council for Inclusion and Community, term expiring May twenty-twenty-six. And finally, and I'm sure this is why we got Monica Sarna to come to the village. Probably this was the crucial thing. Appointment of Monica Sarna to the official village street commissioner. Unless there, let me, let me say one other thing. I'm going to leave out the street commissioner. We have a number of appointments, reappointments of people on boards and commissions. I'm not going to talk about these folks individually, although there would be a lot to say about how lucky we are to have them being willing to serve. Glencoe depends on the strength of volunteers. We wouldn't be able to do what we do for our residents without them in all of these different areas. And so, I just want to say on behalf of the village board, how grateful we are for their willingness to continue to serve. With that, is there a motion to approve these appointments?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
The appointments are approved. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that have been published online to the community. They've been reviewed by the board members individually or together as part of our committee, the whole discussions. And we don't think they require further public discussion. One exception is item six B, which due to an equity interest that Trustee Scott has in one of the village vendors, we're going to remove that from the consent agenda and vote on it separately. This is being done simply to be transparent. Trustee Scott's interest falls below the policy requiring this. But on the advice of council, she's going to refuse herself from the vote on that item. So, with that, the consent agenda has been circulated, it's been published to the community. Unless there are any comments or questions, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? There. It's been moved and seconded. For this, we need a roll call.
And just for the note, just to notate, we are removing item six B.
Yes, yes.
To the regular agenda.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Listner? Trustee Mealopolis? Trustee Underdunk? Trustee Ruben? Trustee Scott?
Yes.
The consent agenda has been approved. That just takes us to the regular business. The first item of regular business is the October twenty-twenty-three check register, which was pulled out of the consent agenda. Trustee Scott has left. The check register was circulated to everyone. Is there a motion to approve the check register?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's have a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Listner? Trustee Mealopolis? Trustee Underdunk? Trustee Ruben?
The motion carries. Trustee Scott is going to go back. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing pertaining to the twenty-twenty-three tax levy of the village Glencoe and Glencoe Public Library. I'm going to open the public hearing. I'll ask our finance director, Nathan Marks.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Okay, so the draft real estate tax levy was presented at the Finance Committee on October nineteenth. And public notice of this hearing was published in the local newspaper on November second, in line with the village's financial policies. The proposed budget, the proposed levy is requesting a five percent increase in the tax levy. This is the maximum allowed under the property tax extension law, despite the fact that the December-to-December CPIU was six and a half percent. We are capped by Illinois law because the village of Glencoe is a non-home rule unit. We are requesting the full five percent increase in the levy year-over-year to cover additional budgeted expenses, as we talked about earlier this week with the draft budget. We have a number of items that are increasing year-over-year, not the least equipment, supplies, services. So, this increase is requested to cover that. The village's levy in total is just over twelve million dollars. It's about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars more than last year. You'll see that the increase rates in the far-right column are slightly above five percent. We do request slightly above five percent to account for any new growth that's allowable within Cook County. The Cook County assessor will evaluate all of the assessments in Glencoe and automatically cut us back to five percent of whatever the new EAV will be in accordance with this levy. So, we are requesting slightly higher, but we anticipate the actual increase to be about five percent. We're estimating that this will impact residents approximately a hundred to a hundred and five dollars per ten thousand dollars that you pay in taxes. That also includes the request for the public library. They are also requesting a similar percentage. It's just over five percent at three million dollars. And it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars more than last year. This grid shows the extension year-over-year. This is included in the packet. It's a little bit hard to see in the PowerPoint. But as you can see, the village's levy is broken down by several functional areas. The general corporate area funds the majority of the village's general fund. And then we also levy for our public pension contribution. I'd just like to point out that that public pension contribution through the levy does not cover the village's full actuarial required contribution. So, the remainder of that contribution will be funded through the general fund. The debt service levy is not required to be submitted to Cook County every year. That's approved when the village board approves bond ordinances. There is a change year-over-year in the debt service levy. You're seeing in our regular debt service, there's a four percent increase. That's in relation to the bonds that the village issued last year. And we are seeing a slight decrease in our limited tax bonds. Those were issued in twenty nineteen to fund improvements at Tudor Court. And that's just the natural decline in the debt service over the term of the bonds. And I'm happy to answer any questions on the levy at this point.
And just for the benefit of anyone watching, there aren't a lot of questions. The village board talked about this at prior finance meeting.
If there are no questions, I would just note that the next step in this process is that the formal property tax levy will be brought before the village board in December, along with the village budget and a number of other items. And then following, assuming that is approved, we will be filing that as quickly as we can the day following the board meeting in order to meet that deadline. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. This is the public hearing on the tax levy. So, now's an opportunity for the public to ask any questions or weigh in on the tax levy. I don't see anyone. So, is there a motion to close the public hearing? The motion to close the public hearing on the tax levy has been moved and seconded. We need a roll call. Oh, we can do a voice? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing on the tax levy is closed. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution authorizing waiver of the competitive bidding process and authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with BOS of Roselle, Illinois for the purchase and installation of office furniture for a cost not to exceed eighty thousand dollars. We do not take waiving competitive bidding lightly. So, I'll, I'll ask Assistant Village Manager John Payton to tell us why we should do that.
Thank you, President Rowan. Included in the calendar year twenty-twenty-four budget is a reorganization that you guys are now familiar with that combined with currently the village manager's office and finance department into a combined Department of Administration and Finance. In order to accommodate that reorganization, as well as a few new team members that, that will join us in the future, staff has planned this partial office renovation in order to accommodate that and make some changes to the areas that are currently the village manager's office, the finance department, and the public works admin area. That reorganization includes the installation of some module, modular, modular cubicle walls, as well as the reuse and reorganization of a lot of the current furniture. The designs are included in the very back of your packet. It's the last item, if you wanted to look at them. As President Rowan noted, the, the reason that the request for the waiver of bids is, is being made is because BOS is the furniture solution that the village previously used when this furniture was bought and purchased. And they're the ones that have worked with us to be creative with how we can reuse as much as possible so that we don't have to buy new furniture for the vast majority of this implementation. So, while some new components are new, as well as the modular walls, a lot of this is reconfiguring and reusing the Lego pieces of the cubicle furniture that currently exist in order to make this as efficient as possible. All of the new pieces, again, are modular in, in the, you know, in the interest of making them flexible for future uses, should the village want to make changes in the future and do more of what we're doing here of reusing and reconfiguring to meet the needs currently. Funds are available in the budget for this project, but we're reallocating them for this specific use as the fiscal year has taken us in this direction. And I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Can anyone have any questions for Assistant Village Manager Payton?
Thank you.
And if not, let me note before we have a motion that the village attorney advises me that when you're waiving competitive bidding, it requires a supermajority vote. And that means a set of four. We need five votes. And there'll be a roll call. Is there a motion to approve the authorization of waiver of the competitive bidding for office furniture?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Listner? Trustee Mealopolis? Trustee Underdunk? Trustee Ruben? Trustee Scott?
Yes.
With the supermajority, the motion passes. So, we're authorizing a waiver of competitive bidding. That concludes regular business. Is there any other, other, is there any other business that anyone wants to raise?
They have just literally thirty seconds.
Absolutely.
There's a person in the audience that the board may not know, but who is here this evening, making sure that our HVAC system, which wasn't working, is working. He drove in from home to make sure that the, the building wasn't stifling. That's Chris Callwhite. He is in the back there. He is our facilities manager. Chris was hired earlier this year. This is a new position that the village has not had in the past. And I will tell you, we are grateful every day for Chris's capabilities. And he has spearheaded a number of projects that are actually happening because of him, projects that we've been trying to get done for a long time. And also make sure that we can have a building that's comfortable. So, I just wanted, because most of you probably haven't had the chance to meet Chris, to point him out in the audience.
Thank you for doing that. Welcome. And thank you for making the building better for all of us. Okay. We've already done our closed session. So, I think unless anybody has anything else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Listen to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.